Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Callanian. I'm the county manager here in Effingham, and I appreciate you all coming here tonight. I know the Chamber reached out to the county last week and asked to provide some information via town hall. They provided some questions that were submitted to them over the weekend and last week, so I'll try and include them all in the presentation. But before we start off, I think we could start off with invocation and pledge allegiance, and we'll have Mayor Ken Lee lead us in that.
If you would stand. Lord, we thank you for the beautiful day and goodness of your good judgment. I thank you for our county and the people around county, the citizens. And Lord, I thank you for all of the opportunities that we have. I'm just so thankful that I'm able to live in county and that it's free and offers to abilities and freedoms of your good judgment. I thank you for all the leadership around county, our county officials, all our city officials. And Lord, I just pray for each one that we will be given discernment and wisdom in all the decisions that we make, and that we can be mindful of the decisions that we make and that they be represented. And Lord, I pray and pray that there are all the better than our county and the people that we serve. I thank you for those who put this on tonight, praying the information will be helpful to everyone as we make important decisions. But I thank each of us individually and as a county. And so I just pray that the information will be helpful and that we will be able to take it and use it in a way that we love. Thank you for every time you serve us every night. I ask you a blessing on your good judgment. I pray to the Lord, the Lord of the nation states of America, and to your beloved, for which he stands, on his nation, under God, in your visible, with the victory that he has.
Okay, we'll get started. I mean, I think I've got so many elected officials in the audience that I've probably spent half the night trying to introduce them all. But I know we've got representatives from the Board of Commissioners, City of Grekin, City of Springfield. And we've got Guyton folks here. There we are, Guyton folks as well. And we appreciate everybody coming. Just so you know, we were housekeeping. We did provide, simply because it's a numerous list, and when I put it up here on the board, I'm not going to go over every single road, but we did provide a list when you come in so you can see the roads that are included in this year's T-Spots. So this is really to provide information about the upcoming T-Spots 2023 and also the T-Spots 2020. But I'll say, there were a lot of questions about industry and property taxes that we got as well. And so we've kind of rotated the questions around that. And so to give you an idea, just a rundown of T-Spots and how the 23 compares to 20. This is a five-year T-Spot. Unlike the last T-Spots, which terminated act the earlier of collecting the max amount of money or five years. The law has changed so that even if you go above the estimated collections, it will continue for the five-year period of time. So if it does get passed, we won't have an early re-up like we did this time. And the reason we have a re-up is we had a lot of changes in the sales tax collection. And some of it was due to COVID and some of it was due to inflation. So it allowed the money to come in much faster, but because of inflation, obviously, projects were more expensive as well. So when you compare the number of road improvements or number of road projects, there were 31 in 2020. There's 130, and this includes the cities as well. I'm sorry. The 130 does not include the city projects as well, but we have those listed as well, so that's on the county side. There are 202 miles of projects on the county's list. This does not include the cities compared to 114 in the 2014. There are 16 intersection improvements. Most of those are roundabouts. There were 10. And this time around, we're actually, I know the City of Guyton, but also the county, included a bicycle and pedestrian trail in there as well, which is a permitted use of T-Spot spots. As I said, this is the list, and this is just the county portion, not the city portion. This is the list that you can grab when you come in. We divided it up in districts so you can usually find projects easier. But one thing we did on here, similar to how we had this time around, the repaving projects, we can usually get done pretty quickly. And we did, nearly all of the repaving projects are done except for one from the 2020 list. So anything that you see in yellow here, those are repaving projects. And those are projects that we can knock off, hopefully, within the first two years of passing the T-Spots. The more complicated ones are generally the intersections and the widening, simply because those are the projects that require right-of-way acquisition and a lot more engineering. These are the city lists. That's also printed out on the backside of that sheet. And we've got a website set up. It's an interactive map. It's a GIS website. If you go to the county's homepage at www.effemcounty.org, you'll see this little banner right here. Click on that. It'll bring up the map. You can zoom in to your street, to whatever section of the county you want to see. It has every single project on there, regardless whether it's in the city or the county, and it's got a detail on what the project includes. And if it's a road, it'll actually show the length of the road that's involved in that project. So one of the questions that we get is, why are the roads in the condition that they're in? And you've got to go back on history on that. And we are playing catch-up on our roads. And so this is the county population. This is not really a surprise, I think, to folks that we've been growing. But I think the one thing I want to point out on this is that if you go back all the way to 2013, that growth has been steady. You know, a lot of what you hear now is that, you know, growth has accelerated over the last couple of years or three or four years, but it really hasn't. It's been relatively steady over that period of time. We've been averaging about 2,000 residents a year. That's not 2,000 households, it's 2,000 individuals per year. And that's including the city. That's come from the Census Bureau. Now, ideally, when you have revenue, you want your revenues to just hug this line and go up as the population goes up. If it goes up above the line, then generally, you're either expanding services or not being very efficient. If it goes too far along the line, in that case, you're either cutting back services, being more efficient, or deferring maintenance. And let me show you the revenues over that same period of time, and you can see where the problem is. Revenues, not only did they not climb with population, they declined. And this was, obviously, our revenues are based on the values of real estate. And so when the real estate market crashed, it stayed down. And because of state law, where you cannot, when the real estate value is recovered, you cannot increase the value, the assessed value of the home to catch up. They stayed flat, and they actually did not catch up. Now, this is adjusted for inflation. They didn't catch up for 11 years, right? And so during this period of time, and that's assuming no growth, when you have the growth on there, during this period of time, the area in here, particularly the area where we're running low, where our revenues went down, you know, that's a structural deficit. And if you're the federal government, you just simply borrow money or print money. We don't do that in local government. And so there had to be, the first thing we did, we found ways to be a little bit more efficient. Those continue today. We outsourced a lot of our processes. We continue to see those savings. The second thing we did, this is how it affects roads, we defer maintenance, right? And we had to, right? Because you cannot, the only other option was to raise military rates in the middle of the worst recession in my lifetime. And that was not an option for the Board. As a matter of fact, they lowered village over this period of time. So we created this deferred maintenance period here that we are still kind of digging out of. That's why you see all of those roads up there being repaving, because really, with the amount of 200-some-odd roads repaving, that should really do a good job with the original T-Spots we had to get us caught up. But the interesting thing about this is that even though, you know, we're not technically caught up here, we're still in good shape, to the point where I consider us fully recovered, simply because this is just property tax. In 2020, we found an alternate source of funds to make up for those property taxes to fund our roads, and that was T-Spots. So when you add T-Spots to this, it closes that gap, and it gives us a standing source of funding that we can continue to maintain our road system on. So that's, and this is the other interesting thing I find, because the next slide should be interesting to you all, that if you looked at how much we charge per capita today versus what we did in 2009, adjusted for inflation, it's $412 versus today, $351. So we've managed to figure out, kind of do a lot more for less. And that also takes into account the T-Spot funds as well, help keep that per capita property tax number down. Now, you can take my word that I believe our property taxes are low, or you can compare us to our neighbors. And this is where we stand. That's Effingham County over here. Now, this is, I'm not including the school board, although the school board, obviously, they create their own budget. But the school board is also low compared to all of our neighbors. But this is the county, what we charge for our countywide services, like our EMS, or 911, or sheriff's department, or jail, or courts, et cetera, compared to that from all the other counties around us. And we are the lowest of the ball. We're at 5.939. The next closest is Bryan County, which is still about 12% higher than we are, going all the way out to Liberty County, which is about four times higher than we are. So point A, I think we're, that T-Spots has helped keep the property tax level down in this county. But even with that, I think the county is running very efficiently. So this is the other one. So somewhat unrelated to T-Spots, but we've got a couple of questions on this. And so I wanted to go over it. I am not the county assessor. That's a separate office run by a separate Board. But I think it's a good time, considering your tax bills are coming out this week. They should be mounted this week. If you haven't received them yet, at the end of last week or today. But the one point I want to bring up is that you all received the notice in May that said, "This is not a bill." Despite that, I saw a lot of things printed online, a lot of comments printed online saying that, "I just got my tax bill this February May," and it went up. That was simply your notice of assessment, right? The Board had not said, neither the school board or the Board of Commissioners, had not set the village rate yet. And so it would show a figure that is higher in taxes than what you're actually going to pay in almost all circumstances. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that you'll see two numbers on there. You'll see your fair market value and your taxable value. The taxable value is what your assessed tax is on. And sometimes, they could be substantially different. So the taxable value excludes your exemptions, like your homestead exemption, like your senior housing exemption. And more importantly, and the biggest one is your Carter Burris Homestead exemption. And I'm going to give you an example. This is kind of a realistic example of how that can affect your, what your tax. If you bought a house, let's say, four years ago at $200,000, and we all know that the market's got up very high, let's say, that house has done very well, and it's now worth $400,000. $400,000 is a fair market value. Your taxable value, because of the limitations, is about $225,000. So keep in mind, the taxable value is what you want to be paying attention to. And then the other point I wanted to bring up is, because people say that, "Well, Tim, that's great, but they're still overvaluing my house." Well, the Tax Assessor's Office is audited every year by the State Department of Audits. And what they do is, they will take all of the home sales that occurred in the last year and compare it to what the assessor has assessed those properties at to see how accurate they are. And it's 4% plus or minus that they are allowed, on average, countywide. If they deviate from that 4%, the county is financially penalized. This year, for the first time in the five years that I've been here, we actually did get penalized, not by that much, but rather than the, our assessed values, on average, were 4.82% below the threshold set by the state. So if anything, right now, the values, on average, are lower than they are. And of course, you're using the sales, actual sales, to determine that. But they try and do the best job that they can, and they, again, are penalized if they go over. This was another big one that came up, which is, this came in a series of different questions, but the genesis is, why isn't industry paying its fair share? And I'm here to tell you that industry is paying its fair share. Industry is not just, is, we're not subsidizing. The residents don't subsidize industry. Really, industry, based on the values that they pay, subsidizing services of the residents, I'm going to tell you. Use this as an example. So this is a school district. It's very easy to figure out what the school district expenses are, right? They have their total expense numbers. And then of that, about a third of it is covered by property tax. So the number of houses or households in the county is 22,313, and the school board village was just lowered to below 15. So if you were to solely rely on residential, I know it's an unrealistic example, but for this point, I just want to try and make a point here, and that you were solely relying on residential in rooftops, being a true bedroom community, each of those houses would have to be, would have to pay $2,300 in taxes to cover the county's $51 million for school expenses. That would require the actual taxable value, not the fair market value, the taxable value to be $385,000. It is, and I know this number is going to surprise folks and seem low, but the average taxable value today in Effingham County is $213,000. The market value, I guarantee, is much higher than that. But because of those exemptions that I talked about, it really drives down the amount that could be assessed on a house. So if you took that $213,000, applied that $15,000 to it, it only raises about $1,300 per house. So it leaves us about $1,000 short. And that's $20 million shortfall from the residences to fund school. If they had to raise $51 million just by houses on that price, it wouldn't be $15,000, it would be about $27,000 or $26.92. So this is where industry and commercial property step in, who, on the school district side, really have no expenses associated with it. So it really is kind of all breathing. And most of, a vast majority of the industrial growth in this county has occurred over the last four years. The county has added $1.1 billion of taxable industrial property to our digest. The result of that, for this tax year, is really annually, that's an additional $6.6 million in revenue to the school district, an additional $3.5 million in revenue to the county. If you took that revenue, that $1.1 million, divided by the, how many houses that would be, it would take 5,164 houses to generate enough revenue that just the increase, this is not the total industrial properties in the county. This is just what's been added to the books since the last four years. So it does a lot to help the tax digest and provide services. And in the case of the county, that $3.5 million, we reduced village by roughly $3.5 million this year. So we reduced village by one mill this year, which is about $3.5 million. So that's allowing the military to be low. And the school district also lowered village. I think they lowered it by about .9 mills. In addition to that, so in order to help fund the infrastructure, there's infrastructure needs surrounding some of these industrial areas in the county. The county has instituted this year three industrial special service tax districts. And so that charges those properties in that, those industrial properties in that area, in those three areas, an additional $1.1 mills. That is used to help fund the infrastructure that's required to support some of this industry, some of the roundabouts, widening, heavier pavement installations. That'll all be collected there. And over time, that'll be a substantial amount of money to provide those services. So what did we do with the last T-Spot? And so I kind of showed you a little bit of it on the first slides, but again, I'll just quickly go over. We did about, there was about $45 million that was proposed, countywide, to collect it. That includes some money from the city. We've done about 70 miles of paved roads with that. We also did some striping of some existing roads, about 45 miles of striping. The county contributed $20 million towards Effingham Parkway, $5 million of which came from T-Spots, and $42 million came from the state. So that $20 million contribution triggered another $42 million grant from the state to build that road. What we have remaining is there are 10 roundabouts under design right now. There are Goshen Road widening. We're going to three-lane most of Goshen Road, put some acceleration, decelerations into some of the larger neighborhoods. That design is underway right now. We've got to do a study first to determine where those improvements were needed. And then Hodgville resurfacing. I mentioned we have 10 roundabouts. Well, three of those roundabouts are in Hodgville. And so we had to get an idea of the design, of the final designs of the Hodgville roundabouts before we could resurface Hodgville. When we do resurface Hodgville, it will also include some additional turn lanes at Scullington Town and at Forest Haven. So those are all part of the T-Spots that we have for this year. There's one project that I wanted to show you that's, they're finishing up design on it right now. And it's the, finishes one of the, or fixes one of the biggest trouble spots in the county. And that is McCall and Courthouse Road and 21. So these are the roads. You can see all the projects that have been completed, all the projects that I mentioned that are in design. These will get started next year. Construction's starting every year. The first roundabout to go into construction will be in the spring, and it will be Hodgville and Goshen, Hodgville and Colacomi, and Hodgville and Blue Jay. Then the next ones following up will be Blue Jay and Midland. With the, the ones that involve state grounds take a little longer because of coordination with them. But they were hoping to get those wrapped up, at least a couple of them underway over the summer. That, the first one will probably be Colacomi and 30, and then followed by 80 and Overboro Road. This is the McCall. Again, this is another good point. Not only does this site have the 2023 projects on it, it also has the 2020 projects on it. So you can see the progress of all of the projects that we have. And you'll see, most of them are green, meaning they're completed. And this includes the city projects as well. This is that project that I mentioned, which was McCall and Courthouse in Springfield. So right now, that intersection is way too close to the most dangerous intersection in the county, which is 21 and McCall. We are going to move it about a quarter mile down McCall Road. And this would essentially go through what is now a mobile home park. And so we've been working with the owner on this. And so you would turn automatically to that, and then there'd be a roundabout back to McCall. So not only do you move the intersection away, you won't have that queuing problem that you had on Courthouse, because the roundabout allows for alternate traffic, alternating traffic. But I'll say, one other good thing is I just had a communication from the state, and they're sending me a letter asking for participation in a signal at 21 and McCall. And that is actually, I told them, no matter what, we're going to contribute to that as well. But that is a 2023 T-Spot project as well. But the state's finally moving on that, and so there should be a tremendous amount of relief to this intersection. So that goes over the 2020 T-Spots. Dollar-wise, we have about, I think about $13 million left. We imagine that these roundabouts are probably going to cost a little bit more than that. So we've been trying to put some additional funds away to cover all overages, so they do not carry over into the next T-Spot that those lists are held separate. This is another question, is who pays the sales tax? And I know Mark, our CIO from the county, did a little bit of, an article on this last week. And so what it really comes down to is, you know, do the residents pay, do the businesses pay, or do the visitors pay? If you're a place like Chad County with Savannah, you're going to get a lot of visitors, a high percentage of visitors that are paying your sales tax, right? The goal is to get those sales tax out of the residents and into these bottom categories here. And because if everything was on the residents, you might as well just simply do a property tax. But because of the unique situation that Effingham County is, a sales tax a sales tax tends to work better for us, or certainly better for the residents. And so let me tell you how we figured this out. So State of Georgia does not tell you how much each man, each business collects in property tax. They do produce something called the DOR, the Sales Tax Commodity Report. And it will take how much it collects in each category on one penny of sales tax. So the categories go from everything like accommodations to food to general merchandise to business-centered ones like manufacturing, utility, and wholesale. Now, the business ones are the ones that are poor does, because that manufacturing and that wholesale generally is project products that are being sold within, you know, to the residents, right? So we do a lot of manufacturing in the county that is related to development. I do not know anyone in Effingham County that owns a G-five. So the, that entire manufacturing, you know, is not really getting charged back to the buyer as an increased cost on the business owner. And so six percent comes to manufacturing, nine percent on wholesale, predominantly from the warehousing. But the big item in Effingham County, probably greater than any county in the state, I haven't gone through every one, but I've not seen percentages this high in the ones that I've looked at, is utilities. And utilities are not a hundred percent business. But we have something in Effingham County. We have three power generation plants. And when those power generation plants buy natural gas, they all run on natural gas, there's a tax on that. Which are, vast parts are, in some cases, with Bullock or Power. All of the power that they generate goes to customers outside of Effingham County. There's a small little portion that is in EMC in the county, but nearly all is outside. The same goes for Georgia Power. And so, but some of that utility percentage is the tax you pay on your utility bill. So we just simply, there's an easy way to extract that. So we took, we took Bullock, we actually took Bullock and Bryant County because they're very similar to us. And so one percent in a year in, in, I'm sorry, sales tax collects five point three million dollars just for utilities in Effingham County. That same one percent, even though their population is ten percent larger, only collects a million in Bullock. Utilities represents thirty-two percent of the total sales tax collected in the county. Only six percent in Bullock, same thing in Bryant. So you can figure out that that six percent is your utility bill tax that, that's charged to businesses or residents. And the remainder, or four point three million dollars per penny, or twenty-six percent of our total collections is related to power generation in this county. That is, that is like our tourism when it comes to generating sales tax that are not directly tied to the residents and retail purchases. So if you take those figures right there, the six percent, nine percent, twenty-six percent comes down to forty-two percent, I believe, yes? And so that means fifty-eight percent that is either being paid for by via retail sales. And those retail sales can either be business-to-consumer, to the residents, or business-to-business, or it can be visitors as well. If you look at the Department of Commerce, they'll tell you that business-to-business, business-to-business retail commerce is about twenty-three percent. I'm not going to use that number, because I'm going to be overly conservative on this and say that of that fifty-eight percent in retail sales, I'm going to say, let's say eighty-five percent of that the residents cover. Twelve percent is business, retail purchases, and three percent is visitors. That's very conservative. There's nowhere, I highly doubt residents pay that percentage. But if you were to use that, this is what the percentages would look like. Forty-nine percent of the sales tax collected would be charged to residents in the form of retail sales. Forty-nine percent would be on businesses and two percent on visitors. So this is why a sales tax generally works better in a county like Effingham, because you're generating sales tax from entities outside the county. And when it comes to manufacturing, there are manufacturing things that are sold outside the county. Same thing with wholesale. So that's kind of, I'll, I'll tell you, this forty-two percent number is pretty solid, right? I, I had to make some assumptions on the remainder. But the assumptions I made on this were, were very conservative. So what are the possible uses for T-Slots? And this question kind of came in more to, you know, can you divert T-Slot money on things unrelated to roads? The answer is no. Well, there's, there's one exception to this. So it has to be related to transportation, right? So it could be roads, it could be repaving, it could be building new roads, it could be striping or putting up additional signage, you know, safety measures for roads. And if the drainage has, is associated with the road project, it can also be used for that as well. One thing that we, you can also use it for because it's transportation is bicycle and pedestrian. And so the county, and we put a map when you came in on this, we're kind of partnering with Guyton on this. This is a unique project. Guyton's got its existing trail system, you know, where the caboose is in downtown Guyton. That is on an abandoned rail bed by a, what I believe, what we're doing the research now is a defunct railroad called the Central Railroad. And so, but that abandoned rail bed goes all the way down practically to Eighty. And it passes a lot of the county's assets along the way. So our goal is to connect Guyton via that bike trail. And it goes right adjacent to Penora Park, which is currently under renovation. Uh, we're, I'm sorry, will be under renovation next year. Then it will continue down and go right into, not to Sand Hill Park, but Sand Hill Elementary School as well. And it'll be a separated pave, the goal is to have a separated pave bike trail. It's about six point eight miles. This will be eligible for federal funding as well. And so, but that is included in the, in the project as well, in the T-Slot twenty-twenty-three list as well. And so this is the last portion I have, and I, I'll go over some additional questions that were asked as well. And so what happens if T-Slot doesn't pass, right? So we survived without a T-Slot before, but our roads simply deteriorated as a result of lack of funding. Right now, the county has about six hundred, and this does not include the city roads. So the county has about six hundred and sixty-one miles of roads that it maintains. Four hundred of them roughly are asphalt, a hundred and forty of them are chip sealed, and then the rest are dirt. When it comes to an asphalt road, G-DOT in our district, right, determines that the life of that road is twelve point two years. It needs to be repaved after twelve point two years. And this is the cost of repaving it with asphalt. For us to continue a chip sealed road, it's sixty thousand, doesn't last twelve years. But, but it, but we would, without T-Slot, we would continue. My, and this is an estimate, I cannot tell you what the board's going to do. But I can give you some potential scenarios. More than likely, without that fund, we would simply go to a maintenance status where, that if we wanted to maintain the existing asphalt roads now, not pave any of our chip sealed roads, or asphalt any of our chip sealed roads. But simply, if your road is asphalt, we continue to maintain it. And if your road is chip sealed, we continue to maintain it if it's chip sealed. But we don't upgrade chip sealed to asphalt. And we do not, and we would probably, you know, just simply because funding's not there, have to pause any sort of intersection improvements. Any of the roundabouts, anything back to effect for the twenty-twenty-three list, not the twenty-twenty list, that'll, that'll continue on. So here's what we worked out. I mean, it's, it's, and it's math. It's not anything more complicated than simple math, right? If every road's got to be paved, if we decide to do, let's keep the road system in the shape that it is right now, right? And that is every road gets paved for every twelve years. We would have to pave thirty-three miles of roads at a cost of, it's actually six and a half million dollars. But we currently get a million dollars a year from the state in an alimony grant, right, for road maintenance. And then we currently, with our existing S-Lot, have about a million dollars a year set aside for roads. So we would continue to have about two million dollars a year. But it would require, just to keep the roads in the shape that they're in right now, which I know many folks think is not that good, it would require, in addition to that two million, an additional four and a half million. Currently, one mil countywide collects about three point two four million. So that would be, not saying maybe do this, but I'm just saying if that was what they were trying to accomplish, it would require an increase of one point four one two mils. You can see that if we say, all right, we, we can't afford to do every, every twelve years, we'll do it every fifteen years, then that decreases the amount of roads that we have to do every month, every year, and therefore decreases our price, and so on down the list. If we went to seventeen years, twenty-five years, if we just said, all right, we're not going to repave our roads until forty years, until an average of forty years. That's what we can do with the two million dollars a year that we currently have. It wouldn't require any sort of mileage increase. However, that's a little misleading, because by the time you get to a road that hasn't paved in forty years, there's not much road there left. So it's, a simple repaving is not going to do it. It's going to be a little bit more expensive than that. It's going to be a lot more expensive than zero, but it's just very difficult to figure out. And so, but to make it simpler formula that, I mean, and, and I put this here because this is a scenario that I cannot imagine will happen, right? That if the county wanted to replace all of the T-Slot funds, so therefore everything on that list can continue to get done, and all the roundabouts and all of the chip sealed roads on the list would get paved, that would require an additional twenty million dollars a year, because that's what we would collect in T-Slot, right? So that would be an additional six million dollars a year. That would effectively double our military. So the likelihood of that happening is extremely improbable, which is why it's not on this chart. But, so somewhere in this scenario is probably where we would be if we didn't have T-Slot. And, you know, and like I said, there's only one option in this scenario where things technically don't get worse. And that is the paving, that is the twelve and a half year thing. Everyone else, the roads will deteriorate from the condition that they are right now, simply because we're not repaving them on the cycle that, that's required by them. So that, that, what happens without T-Slot? I don't know, the, the answer is, I don't know, it's up to the board. We have to figure it out and come up with some recommendations for them to, to move this, to essentially keep our roads driving. And I think that's it. But there were a couple other questions that I wanted to address related to industry. And I'm going to actually go back to those slides. And so one of the questions was, and they were very similar, one of them, why does an industry pay impact fees? Impact fees are complicated, particularly when it comes to transportation, because you cannot arbitrarily decide what an impact fee is. It has to be based on formula. That formula is generally considered trips per day. And the problem with that is, well, it wouldn't burn houses that much. It would severely, it would severely prevent things like daycare and preschools from ever being built in this county. Because a trip per day would be equivalent to what a warehouse was. And so no one's just simply going to write an impact fee check for forty thousand dollars, you know, to, to open a preschool or daycare. So it's a very kind of a, there are some negatives to certain types of impact fees. The county is looking at the possibility of other impact fees related to public safety and making parks. But transportation ones tend to be, tend to do some harm in addition to the collection. That is why the board came up with the concept of creating the industrial special service districts. Because the county, our industry is in very limited areas of the county. And so those purple areas are those industrial zones I was talking about. That's the, by I sixteen and Old River Road. That's research forests like Landford Elementary School and Hodgsville. And that is, that's Old River Road right across from Twenty-One. And that's where Georgia Pacific and Georgia Power are located. Because they're, they're, they're kind of combined in one, in these single locations and not scattered shot all over the counties, we can create these districts that just include the properties within those areas. So it acts as, it's very similar in effect to a, to an impact fee. We are using those funds to improve the infrastructure in those zones. So while we technically don't have impact fees, we just instituted something. So not only do you get the obvious tax, tax benefits and collections that I mentioned earlier from the industry, but they're actually paying an additional eighteen and a half percent on top of their six mils from the county towards their infrastructure as well. And then the second question I had is regards to industry, if I recall, is, you know, why did the county give out all of these tax abavements and so on and so forth? Well, the county did, the county cannot, does not have the authority to give out any sort of tax abatement to a, to a warehouse or any company, right? The Industrial Development Authority, which is a separate board, separate entity, they have the, they have the power to do that. There are five warehouses in the county that have gotten that. Now, they're not a hundred percent. I think the longest one is six more years. And then essentially by this, it gradually goes up. And so by the sixth year, it's a hundred percent on the books. But it's, you know, it's not, of all the warehousing that you have in a county, it only affects five. And, and the county board commission said nothing to do with it. The last question that we got is why weren't the residents involved in creating the list? Well, we reached out to the board on this, and we predominantly used four sources to get what roads that we wanted to get on the T-Slot list. The first, we maintain all the roads, so therefore we get all of the service requests on it. So we took all those service requests and scored roads based on the number of service requests that road had gotten over the last five years. The second thing that we've looked at and went, went out to the board themselves and said, you know, what are you hearing amongst your constituents, you know, that are, that are the heads? And we included them in there as well. We had to pare this list down, believe me. We had to pare this list down, believe me, to get it to the level that you want. But the third is the county did a pavement assessment about two years ago. That assessment graded every single road that was maintained by the county, whether it's dirt, whether it's chip sealed, or whether it's asphalt, and gave it a score. And that score was a weighted score to determine whether it was a connector road, whether it was an artery, whether it was, you know, just a simple kind of cul-de-sac. You know, that affected the score to determine its, you know, the need for it to get repaved. So every time we would get, we would come up with this list, all of the staff data is in a spreadsheet. We would then look it up and determine, you know, whether that road was eligible, shouldn't be eligible for repaving. What the board wanted to do, the main reason they went through this process is let's get the politics out of determining what roads get repaved. Let's let data drive it versus, you know, versus, you know, whoever's, you know, more influential or louder than me type of thing. So that's where the information came from. And we can make this map publicly available for folks to see it as well. I can see if I can actually put it on that T-SLOSS as well. And I think, I don't think I have additional questions, or at least I covered the questions with that. Oh, has the county requested funds from the state? Absolutely, particularly when it came to what's going on with the port and the Hyundai project. And so I can tell you that the state just did a four-county study of the roads related specifically to port and Hyundai to determine what the needs are. And there were a lot of roads in Effingham County that were on that list. And I can tell you, one of the, one of the items on there was the four-lane of Effingham Parkway, right? We bought a substantial amount of right-of-way, so we shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to go to four-lane it fairly. Still need some additional right-of-way, but a good chunk of a charge of purchase. So four-laning that, including all the improvements to get Effingham Parkway all the way to Jimmy Deluche, widening Highway twenty-one, all the way from Ninth and New Rinkin to I ninety-five. And they even had a bridge. If you look right here, that's where, I think, I'm trying to go back. Yeah. So if you look right here, that's where two eighty and eighty meet, right? And so, and this is Bluechamp. They even recommended putting a bridge over the Ogici to connect that point. That's all good news for us. Our understanding is that the, that road infrastructure is high on the importance level of this year's legislative session. And that they're going to push to get some, some of that funding our way. And obviously, all that positively affects Effingham. I think that's all the questions that I got in. I don't know if any of the board members want to chime in or if there was any question that I might have missed. I hate to do most of the talking, so. Either I put you all to sleep or I've covered everything everyone wanted to ask, so. The last thing is, my email address is, it'd be easy to find you if you need any of this data. That's where I am, tcounty@effinghamcounty.org. You know, let me know what questions you have and any other information that I can get to. One point I did realize as I'm closing this up, and I don't know whether I mentioned it or not, is that there's a longer list of roads, right, on this T-SLOSS. But we know we didn't get every one. And so what we did for every district is we put an extra million dollars aside, so that, that's five million dollars. That is an extra twenty miles of road. So that if a road pops up or something that kind of slips through the cracks, we'll be able to add it and use T-SLOSS funds to repay it. With that, we hand it over to Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. On behalf of the chamber, I'd really like to express our sincere thank you for the presentation you've given from the county and all of your efforts, you and your staff in putting this together. We know that the key to T-SLOSS is education and certainly welcome the opportunity for the public to have had a heart in asking the questions. So thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you on behalf of the chamber, and again, thank you to the county.